They call a meeting order for October 2nd, 2024. We'll start with the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All bills are all signed and up?
My turn, sir.
Approval of the agenda.
Make a motion we approve the agenda.
Motion from Ed. Do we hear a second?
Second.
John, seconded, all in favor? Okay. Minutes on the last meeting?
I moved that we approved the minutes from September 25th to 24th, 24.
John made a motion, do we hear a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ed, all in favor? Okay, town administrator, weekly update.
Okay, just a couple. The fire chief let me know that the AEDs are in and he's going to start placing them at the transfer station. He's got one for the rep, the town hall. And I did ask him to schedule some training so that staff could be trained on how to use them. We're looking at Wednesday, October 30th, from 3:00 to 4:00. So essentially, we can close the transfer station an hour early that day and the town hall will be closed for now and do some mandatory staff training. We've tried in the past to get staff here on days that were not open and it just doesn't work. So we do it on a day that everybody's required to be at work. They should be at the training. So we'll get that advertised and I'll reach out to you, Rod, and listen more details of that. Next is the Sheriff's Department, September reports, which I appreciate the people that phone and email in to tell them this is their favorite part of the month and favorite part of your sort of meeting. When these get brought alive.
You've had people say.
Oh, I have so many people reach out that they look forward to this part.
Did they publish these things?
Yeah.
People love it.
Oh, they do. And when we spoke to, when we met with the sheriff, we talked about the fact that we read these. I'm going to continue not to use names, but he did say that we could if we were to choose. So we're going to skip that for now. All right, so this is September acting Shapley. The first one was on September 1st. There was a car versus bicycle crash on Henry Mills Road in Shapley. 14-year-old male was riding his motorized bicycle when he was struck by a car. There was just facial injuries, so luckily he's okay. On the 1st also of September, we had an unattended death to one of our residents on Garving Road. Then there was nothing suspicious. On 9/4, there was a gross sexual assault that occurred in Acton over the weekend. A subject called to report that while he was at an underground music festival, one of his male acquaintance friends sexually assaulted him. The investigation is ongoing.
Was that festival in town?
Yes, it was. On September 4th, two deputies took a call of an assault that happened. Someone indicated assault had happened on Backroad. When they got there, there was a 17-year-old male from Lebanon that was arrested for an OUI. They did some searches of his vehicle and it looks like he had just robbed the hometown mobile in Lebanon. So they were able to recover a lot of that alcohol. On September 8th, one of the deputies investigated two crashes of motorcycles on the Mann Road in Shapley. The operators were transported to the hospital and appeared to be very uncooperative at this time. On the 19th of September, a 13-year-old female from Acton was reported missing by her mother. It was suspected that she either was in the woods or got picked up from an unknown person. Warden services responded. She was later safely returned to her mother by someone else. September 20th, deputies responded to Hopper Road in Shapley for domestic disturbance. There was no actual crime that took place. However, during the incident, it was determined that there were firearms missing and they are investigating that. September 23rd, deputies arrested an individual after a 911 call was placed by a subject in Acton that he was inside her home and he was going to kill her. Dispatch could not get the subject back on the line. They appeared and it looked like he was holding her hostage. When they arrived on the scene, the individual was found hiding in a tent outside. He was charged with domestic violence, violation of protection order, fugitive from justice, stalking, and several other charges. 9/24, a subject from Wisconsin reported that an individual called him and has been harassing him from Acton. Turns out, he actually lived on Owles Ness Road in Shapley. They were able to locate him based on the phone number and he was transferred to the Sheriff's, to York County Jail for violation of condition of release.
So the guy was from Wisconsin?
The guy was from Wisconsin. The gentleman stalking him is from Acton.
From Acton, okay.
Ah, Shapley, I'm sorry, Shapley, Owles Ness Road in Shapley. Don't worry, Acton makes up for it, just the last one. On September 30th, Milton Mills, New Hampshire Police Department initiated a vehicle chase in their community. They continued into Acton Main on Fox's Ridge Road. A slow speed pursuit continued into Acton at approximately 9:15. Some Acton community members exited their residence to try to assist the New Hampshire authorities by forming a roadblock. One resident was armed with a shotgun and fired shots at the suspect's vehicle. Did strike the vehicle. The individual was arrested for reckless conduct with a dangerous weapon and posted bail.
Was that, it sounded like that was all Acton. Was that just the Acton report?
No, some of it was.
There weren't many.
No, we definitely had more than some.
Well, we should keep that in mind when we get to one of our.
Yes, especially that.
That's, that's very sad.
Sexual assault at the underground festivities.
Yeah, I didn't know we had underground.
Municipal Sheriff's Department.
The Sheriff's Department.
I don't think it's actually underground.
No.
No. Probably some barn.
Actually is.
In a barn?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I think, yes.
But we'll talk about that when I'm done. Last, just to let you know that we now have absentee ballots for the November election. For the 226 people that have been waiting for them, they have been mailed. So they are out, you should get them anytime. If you want to vote by absentee ballot, you're welcome to come into the clerk's office during regular business hours. That's it, somebody?
Thank you. Okay. I guess we'll do our least updates, Tom.
I really don't have anything to report this week.
Okay.
Let's move on.
You sound like me.
Nothing on the transfer station, other than what we're going to talk about later. Adam controls, he's still doing his thing. How's he doing on his?
Doing good, just took another training, took his RAVI certification. So he's, he's taking them every time they come up, so he's doing good.
Mary Grant, get the pumpkin cabin going on this Saturday, October 5th. I'm on the 3. And it is October 5th, to reiterate. So we're going to have, what, 50 or 75 pumpkins up there? Food, drink, and whatnot. Great type of kids, that's all I got.
Well, I got nothing on the school department. They meet again next week. Planning board has public hearing tomorrow for the new development on Young Ridge Road. And cemetery committee, it's mostly done.
Good. I'll go ahead. If I could go back, it was not an activity this week that Jennifer and I had talked. I think it would be a good idea when we get financial statements to invite either the auditors or Mark Roy in to go through the financial statements and explain them. I think either one could do a fine job. I would suggest Mark Roy because I think we ought to use it as a time to kick off the budget process. And Mark can help us sort of critique what the budget process looked like last year, what he might recommend for changes, and sort of have him come in, spend some time with the board and the public to talk about financial results and also the upcoming budget cycle. And so hopefully that would be in October. I don't know when the auditors are going to be done, but.
Yeah, they're actually doing really well on it.
Yeah, I'm sorry, maybe we can get that done in October. Okay?
Yeah.
Does it sound good?
Yeah.
And since Tom left to go back, can I go back? You reminded me of something. Last call for department heads, committees that have not submitted a town report is the last reminder before I start naming off departments and committee chairs next week.
Start shaving them?
Try, yes, that was probably saying that. We've got to start getting it, trying to get it done early. But I'm still missing a few.
Did you pass along to David the section I wrote for the selectmen report?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, right, but that's been, it's been adjusted based on the other committee adjusting it, so I'm not sure if you still need that.
No, the one that I had written for is in addition to your letter. I had.
He hasn't seen his letter yet.
He hasn't, he hasn't seen his letter.
But let's go.
I wanted to talk about the budget process and what we accomplished over the past year with that. So maybe you want to consider putting that in your letter.
Yep.
Can I go down? I have nothing, so.
Where are we at with this? I mean, the gentleman for the cemetery, is that, we're waiting for the survey or are you waiting for the results of the survey to do the cemetery work by the tree out here?
Oh, the veterans.
Veterans, yeah. Did you want to wait for the survey? Is that, is that?
Yeah, I wanted to make sure that was all done first.
Um, they say it shouldn't be much longer.
Okay, good. Yeah, all right. Okay. So we got that taken care of. Now we're going to the department head, committee chair updates. Do we have any of that new? I don't see any. Okay, we're going to move down the whole business and sand bits.
All right, so last week we presented them. I think that Will has made some calls.
Will Henley, ZI came in last Thursday, got the sand bits from Jen. I told her what was a bit of Friday morning and I talked to him and I went to bed with him on Monday. Funny thing is, he watched the meeting last Thursday. He thought he got the sand bit, so there he's got a screen and a bunch of sand. So he's got a file of sand already made up, but that's despite the point.
Yeah.
I went over there, I talked to him, looked at the sand and everything. That's what we're looking for and everything. So I, I got no issue going with him, so.
So did you ask him? Because I mean, last year, the issue we had was he was hauling from Parsons Field. And we wanted to make sure that you got going, sitting down in San Chetra and waiting for one truck.
Yeah, no, that's what I, that's why I kind of told him it's kind of a deal breaker was I need at least two trucks. That's what I have always told everybody, I want two trucks, two or three trucks, so.
Coming from Parsons Field?
No, they're coming from Shapley.
Oh, they're going to do it from Shapley and stuff?
Yeah, they're coming from Shapley, not Parsons Field.
Okay.
Yeah, I told him last year, he said he doesn't want to haul out there anyway. So, yeah, they're right in Shapley, right on Route 11.
Are we going to be able to get our sand in the winter time there?
Yeah, he's going to make a big pile of it. But I kind of didn't really go into detail with him, but he said whatever happens, he'll make sure he's got some piled up for the winter time and everything. So, yeah, we should have plenty of trucks and he's going to give you at least two and then he says he knows somebody that he can get to haul the three, so. And he promised me 14 loads a day, no matter what, with each truck.
14 a day?
Yeah.
So how many yards is that?
I was going to leave you one at 250 yards a day, I think.
Okay, so let's do some math. 250 yards a day, how many yards are you going to put up?
I told him last year that the Lansing Depot, we did 15, around 1500, I think.
Okay, so how many days is that going to take to put up that sand?
It took us like five, six days last year at Lansing Depot.
Okay, yeah.
And so how many days for this guy?
If he told me he would get the three trucks, I mean, I mean, the two trucks, I don't see why we couldn't do it in a couple of days, I mean.
Okay, similar?
Yeah, I mean, it's right at last year. They hauled like two days last year, then they had to stop and then we only get another two days. But when we do this, we're just going to do it and get it right over with.
Yeah, I mean, I just, when we look at the numbers, I don't even know what the second, what was the second bit?
13, what is it?
Okay, so you're talking a noting, what's it?
25 cents.
25 cents, 30 cents, something like that?
25.
25 cents, okay. What I, what I, what I'm worried about is this, that we're going to end up spending more money because the trucking is going to take so much longer. I just want to make sure that, you know, we got, you know, we know that we're going to get it in a couple of times. If you feel that's what we're going, that's the way we're all doing, good.
Yeah, no, I mean, like I said, it usually takes us, I mean, usually takes us like four or five days anyway to put sand up, so. It was, we, there was two of us doing it, it took us that long, so. Unless we want to not go down that road, I mean, I don't.
Maybe it's, maybe it's not feasible, is it? Can you have a backup?
It should take five days to put 500 yards of sand.
No, I mean.
We used to put up those sand in three to four days at the most when we were putting 2,000, 2,500 yards up. So that's why I'm concerned that we're going to be spending all that time with three trucks, you know, to haul 500 yards from Shapley. And whether or not it's feasible, are you going to save any money? Because we're going to spend it on the other end, that's what I'm saying.
Well, yeah, you're going to spend it either way, here or there.
Well, no, you're not going to spend it the other, the other way. If you, if you're, if you've got a closer pit that's only 25 cents more, but they can haul you 500 yards in three days, you're saving on loader, machine time, and everything else on the other end. You've got two loaders down there, right?
No, I was having, I was having one last year. I push it up and we get a platform aid, I do my exit.
You could, you could do that with one, take it five days, but.
Yeah, we each have it, I mean, it's just, I mean, I got in mind last year with everything that happened, it was just me and, me and my father down there last year, so.
Okay, yeah, if you're, if this is, just follow me.
Yeah.
I'm just making sure that, you know, because we've had, other towns have had this trouble where they've got low bid and then the sand takes everybody to get there. Guys are sitting there with a loader, a dozer for hours. Nothing's getting done, wasted money. Whether or not 25 cents is worth, you know. But if there's a recommendation you're making, I'm fine with it.
When would you expect him to have that in there?
I told, I, I told him whatever happens tonight, we'll talk the other week and I don't see why, probably in the middle of next week, he probably wants. I'd like to just get it done with myself.
So if there's an issue, if there's an issue, you can always have a backup for this, can't you?
Well, I mean, you're committed, you're kind of committed.
Well, but if he can't produce what he can.
Yeah, I made it pretty, I made it pretty clear.
I'm not saying that he can't honor it, but if there's an issue, you always got a backup.
Can you put a deadline on it? Do you deliver such things?
Is he going to be able to run across Goose Pond or?
Well, no, that was the thing, he's got to come down Route 11.
Yeah, so he's not, he's not going to haul 250 a day then?
Well, he told me, I called him again today, we talked again today and I told him, you know, I want these two trucks and he said he could probably get me three, so.
Let's see how it goes.
Yep, good, it's your work, Deja, I'm just being that guy. You know, I just.
We did it last year, I mean, same thing with Lansing Depot, I mean, it is.
Yeah, they're all coming from there.
Yeah, I mean, I only had, gosh, at one point last, last year, one day, we only had one truck. One last year, that's why it wasn't a really good deal to begin with this year.
Oh, yeah, well, that's exactly why, you know, we just, I just don't want to be in that situation again.
Yeah, no, that's what I kind of told the gentleman last year. I kind of pretty much told him this year to bid again, I probably want to do it to you, so.
Just want to wait and put it for it.
I don't, really, the guy seems like he's a good guy. I guess I went talking.
Sure is, that's great.
I'm sure he is.
Yeah, but I mean, I made it pretty clear to him. I said, if you don't think you can work, then why not do something different? He told me it shouldn't be an issue, so.
Yep, good, good. I'm good with it. So the bid is Milton Mason LLC. I'll make a motion to give the sand contract to Milton Mason LLC for $12,095 per yard up to 4,000 yards. Do I hear?
Seconded it.
Seconded it, all in favor? Okay, thank you.
Just one symmetry?
No, you don't have to sign it, I have the minutes.
That's good. Okay, new business, special town meeting, what?
A few people in the office, in the lobby, I want a copy, excuse me, there's one there. Okay, so we've just kind of put some articles together, so just need to go through them, see if you guys want to change through them. We did talk about them a little bit at our open door workshop at 5:00, so the public more than anything. We do have a public hearing scheduled next Wednesday, October 9th. We also have, Warden Finance has scheduled their meeting for next, the following Tuesday, the 15th. So hoping that they're going to come to the public hearing on the night, they can hear your thoughts, hear the public's thoughts, and then hopefully they'll vote on the 15th. Special time meeting is scheduled for the 3rd.
Have they been invited to the public hearing?
Not officially, but I'll make sure they do. I want them to, once you approve this draft, they'll be part of that email. And I'll make sure you're CC'd, so.
Okay.
Okay, so Article 1 is to choose a moderator for said meeting. Article 2, see if the town will vote to appropriate a total of $10,490 from the unassigned fund balance to ratify the overdrafts in the transfer station account for FY 23-24. Are we elaborating as we go through these for the sake of the public? Or we're just, what are we doing?
Can we have Rob and speak to it, please?
So this is the overdraft of $10,490?
Yeah, it's the demo, 99% of it. We have a lot of demo coming into this town. It's filling our containers up quicker than last year here. That's the.
Well, this is last year, remember?
Yeah, I meant.
This is the last year.
Right, okay, yes. It's the, the demo is, it's killing us. Sometimes I had four, four containers a lot in one week.
Where is all this demo coming from? Well, we don't know if it's, is it all in town?
They all have permits.
Well, what does that mean? They, how do they get?
They have, they pay taxes in the town, Acton.
They have transfer stations.
Transfer stations, yeah, right, I'm sorry.
Dump stickers.
Dump stickers, correct.
So is this likely to be tearing down properties, tearing down a house, or don't know?
Well, you should.
They come in with, you know, last Monday, I had a shed come in. It was cut off in my recommendations of size. Where'd it come from? They had a permit, I don't know. I, we discussed this a couple of weeks ago. How do you police that? Even with a brush, how do you police?
Are we, I heard rumor that somebody tore a house down and hauled it up there, am I correct?
I know there was a trailer torn down, yeah.
Trailer, and houses?
And then just last Monday, there was a shed torn down.
So the, the, what, what, majority of the stuff that you see coming in, is it? Can you explain what it is? We have that idea, we got to.
Right, well, we, I try to maneuver the stuff as much as I can inside the container.
Hold on, that's more than the container.
The container is anything that's wood, glass, you know.
But my question is, I guess, I'll be more.
Does it look like someone tore down a house?
Is it housing, is it remodel stuff, is it?
A little bit of everything. And it's, and it's, and it's multi-stuff, like couches, stuffed over stuffed chairs, that I only can break up just so much with the cloth and everything. I don't have nothing to push it down into the container.
We don't want you doing that.
Right.
So if, if there is somebody coming in with a large load.
Yeah.
Do we have the means to look to see if there's a permit for whatever caused that load?
Not at this time.
Can we?
We used to have.
Is there any rule where we couldn't, we put you in a position where we could ask them, where's this coming from? Look to see if there's a permit. And I'm talking about large loads. Because, you know, someone's got furniture.
Yeah.
That's what they pay their taxes.
Right, yeah.
I'm talking about, there's, I think, is concern that these may not be coming from Acton.
They come from everywhere.
And, and probably because we're so inexpensive or wide open, why not come to Acton? And now the taxpayers are stuck with another $11,000 bill.
Yeah.
And so we need to, we need to, we need some way of verifying that this is legitimate.
So we used to have a thing where people would have to go down and go see Kenny and this and that, but, but like you said, lots, it's not all just that. It's, you know, odds and ends in your dooryard and stuff, so. So, you know, we, we talked about this before, about possibly every time we sent our tax bills out, send them two tickets, you know? Give them two tickets, boom. Because what that, the average person down Acton doesn't take a bunch of stuff, but now. But what's happened, I think, people start ripping their sheds down, start doing this, start doing that. And, you know, I'm not going to say it's happening, but I guess I'm going to say it's happening. I'm sure there's contractors, roofers, and everything else, when they're coming from wherever they did their job, they're not going to Jeff Simpson's, they're not going to the town they're doing the job in because they can do it here for free. So to get rid of that problem, you know, you give them the two vouchers and that's it. You know, and then after that, we may have to start charging. I mean, this is, this has cost us a lot of money, wait for your $1,000 can. $1,000 can.
Oh, at least. Well, in, in two months, August, August and September, it was like $29,000 to get rid of demo.
But what I'm saying, what did it cost, what?
Two months was $30,000? And what's the total expense of this, the year, roughly?
You haven't.
We don't have that, I don't think we even budgeted that demo line.
I don't know exactly, I think it might have been 50?
It might have been 50. Really through 30 in two months. There's something wrong here. Somehow we got to get some expectation about what's appropriate, what's, what's legitimate. We want to make sure residents can use the transfer station that they're paying for, but we don't want other people taking advantage of us. And so I'm not sure how to do that.
With a, with a big demo trailer full?
I'd ask for a permit, I'd ask for the permit.
I know one person brought in two, two and a half dump truck loads and he's building a new house on Peacock. You know, how do you?
Well, we have no, you know, restrictions.
Right.
So my problem is, is, you know, if I'm buying a house and I have to clean up my dooryard and I own dump trucks and shit, it's not the mean. And whether or not to haul it in with my dump truck, I probably wouldn't do that, but I haul it in my dolly or something, you know? I mean, who says just because that's DW, that's not a trucker, I should be worried? Well, that guy, I pay my taxes too, but, you know, we're going to, the only way I think we can put a hamper on this is, you know, people should be able to demo it for free. But after a certain quarter, you have to, you have to cut the free off. And I honestly believe that, I think the only, doing the permit thing down, down there doesn't, I don't think works.
You always got to miss them.
Because, you know, not everybody's thinking of shedding a house down there to clean up other stuff, you know, junk around the dooryard and stuff. So, you know, if we, like I suggested before, you know, send the tax bills out or, or come up to town hall, maybe.
That might be, my, my only concern with the town, with the bills is, remember, we're required to send them to the owner of record as of April 1st, out of 3,000 taxes.
You can't do it right now.
No, I know, I'm just saying, but out of 3,000 tax bills, we probably get 400 back. You know, the owners change after that date, so those cards, I know we see this in Shapley all the time. all the time, they're constantly inundated with people that swear they never got the cards, you know what I mean? They didn't get the tax bill, they didn't get, so I think that there may be, I think you're on to something with the card, just not sure in the tax bill.
Well, I think the tax bill's the only way to do it, unless they all have to come up, you know, like get a new dump sticker every year, I guess they can get it then, right?
Other towns must have solved this problem.
Yeah, I mean, Chapley knows the cards.
Everybody charges.
Minimum amount paid.
We're, we're the only town in the state of Maine that don't charge for something. Because when I went to the conference two years ago, I, we went around the roundtable, and they said, yeah, we charge this, this, and this for this. When it got to me, and I said, we don't charge for nothing, and I, they all looked at me like I had three heads.
And well, maybe, who knows, maybe you advertise for all these people to come.
This was up in bar.
But, you know, at the end of the day, you know, we can do this, we just gotta figure out how, how to distribute the free vouchers, or whatever you wanna call it. But I think, like I said, the average person's always gonna go up there a couple times, they've done demo stuff.
They definitely cut that.
And we cut it back, at least stop regulating a little bit, and after that, you know, we have to come up, especially with the demo, everything else I think is fine.
I, I think there ought to be, we ought to allow for some reasonable amount of disposal. I don't know how to, how to define that or whatever. I know for people that maybe are not main residents, but property owners on the lakes, I've heard them say, when you think about it, this is one of the advantages they get. And quite frankly, the people on the lake, they have a lot of crap to throw away. And so, and I think we should preserve that, that culture, that practice.
I've also seen trailers coming from miles and chooses.
Right. And this year, this year has been a really big year for AC units and refrigerators. And that's another cost on, on getting the free on and stuff out of them.
So right now, what do you figure, we're doing a month per dumpster for the demo?
As price wise, or how many?
Well, you said it's a little over 1,000, it should be around 1,000 dollars.
Right.
What are you getting, about five ton of dumpster?
Yeah, it depends on how things get stacked in it. Yeah, anywhere from between three to five times.
Yeah, okay, and?
And this August and?
You're paying what right now for your, your, your tonnage fee and tipping?
What's that?
What are you paying for your tonnage fee and tipping?
Uh, to haul it is $375 for the rental, the can, $75 for the fuel charge, then he charges us $2 a day for that can to sit on our property. So it averages about 398, 375 to 390.
I think if you, Robert, it may be, if you can get aggressive, when you see somebody coming in with a large load, you really interrogate them to find out what's going on here. If people begin to understand that, and maybe if it's appropriate, you turn them away. If that gets out, people are gonna realize that they may be less likely to bring things in from down.
Okay.
So I'm not saying give, you know, legitimate.
Right.
Something doesn't look right, get aggressive with them, go after them, and make sure you're comfortable with it.
Yeah, I can, you know, whatever you guys.
Remind me to do, I'm gonna have to do.
Yeah, that's what we're gonna, that's what you gotta do, I mean, you, you know the people that come in on a regular basis with bits and pieces.
Yeah.
You get a different looking load.
Okay.
Talk to them.
Get a guy that comes through three tons, three tons.
Right. I know a trailer that was torn down on Buzzard Road, that all that came here. Piece by piece, but I know.
Well, I mean, I would do.
Why not? Do I stop them from doing, how do I?
We have no restrictions.
We're gonna have to with something.
We have no restrictions for property owners, right? But I'm talking about the people, if, if there's something coming in, and you're suspicious that this may not be coming from, you know, a property enacted.
How do I know?
I, I don't know, Robert. I suspect you know where the contractors are that are coming in, and if there could be.
There's really no part, really that I know of. You know, there's one that comes in, but he only comes in with, with a freaking wheelbarrow full of scraps. It's not like the guy on, on Monday, he came in with two trailer loads with a full shed, with shingles on the roof and everything, but it was all cut. I couldn't say, no, you can't dump it, you gotta permit.
Going back to July and August, I think you said it was almost 30,000 dollars for those two months. So a thousand dollars a park, that's 30 dumpsters in two months. 15 dumpsters a month.
Yeah, some, some weeks.
Four dumpsters a week.
Went up four, yeah.
Four dumpsters a week. That can't be normal trash.
No.
There's something, I, I don't know what it is, there's something unusual going on here.
There's a lot of remodels going on the lake and stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
remodels.
Most of the stuff that gets torn down on the lake is a small little place, you know, it's an iron and square foot place that probably can't come on dumpster.
Four a week is a lot.
Yeah, I, I totally agree with you. And that's why I wrote that down for, for that.
What's a, roll it down?
For the month of August, or July and August.
Ed, maybe you and, and, and Robin could get together and see what can be done.
I'm working on a spreadsheet right now. I started it today, went back to July 1st to see what we got. That'll give, I think that'll give us some handle.
I keep all the records at the transfer station, all the slips and everything, I can go through them and total them up, whatever you guys need me to do.
I mean, it's not an accounting issue, I mean, we, normally as a treasurer, there's a Mark Roy, the auditor, I mean, and I just want to make it clear, the 10,000 that we're asking for, we actually overdrafted 30,000 in hauling, in hauling and tipping. It's 30,000, he just had, you know, salary lines, other areas that helped get it down to 10,000, so I don't want to be misleading, but it was 30,000 in, in hauling.
30,000, did I hear a $50,000 budget somewhere?
I, yeah.
Well, no, the budget is, I mean.
No, just for the demo.
Yeah, just, yeah.
Do you have your?
No, I don't.
You don't want the demo line supposed to be?
Maybe it was 16.
I don't know, my head, I can go all the way, come get it.
Well, I mean, the hauling line, I mean, this was for last year, was 129,000, tipping was 78.7.
See, when Mark Roy, no, and I'm not pointing fingers, when Mark Roy took over, he gave us all, all the hauling into one, and Ed and I had a real hard time trying to figure out, so, it, it could be, when he made that whole transition from Mark Roy to what we used to, the, the article numbers, is very difficult for.
I think the bottom line numbers were, were right in line with Patsy's.
Well, everything's the same. The bottom line is the same.
Bottom line number is.
The only difference was, is he took the, the, which I think is a better, that's the same level.
You still have the detail, Robin, whether I'm combining or not.
But I'm just saying, how do you?
This has nothing to do with Mark Roy.
How do you figure out if you were over budget, and, you know, he lumped it all into one, how do you know on cardboard, how do you know on demo, how do you know on?
I'm gonna say this, once it's done, is not the time to try to figure it out. We should have figured it out before it happened, so we could monitor it and, and make adjustments before we end up with the overdraft. That's, that's what the department has, has to do.
You, you, you know roughly what you did last year in your, the trash, the cardboard and everything already, right? And you, when you submitted your budget this year to the finance committee and the select board, you, you had a separate line for the demo, didn't you? So you don't keep track of what you think the demo is, and ever separate yourself, you don't, well, you should have to. Because that's, that's why.
Otherwise you can't build a budget without it.
We just kinda went from what we, I'm still trying to figure this all out.
Yeah, I'm just trying to help you here, because, you know, each like haul and gravel, okay? You know, my, every year, Buck, when I was road commissioner, I had a maintenance line, okay? Nothing was laid out, okay? But I did personally, myself, okay, I'm gonna spend 5,000 for mowing, I've got 10,000 we'll do for gravel, okay? But I knew roughly what I needed for all that, okay? Well, 5,000, okay, I needed six, so I pulled 1,000 out of my gravel line, okay? You, you had to maneuver those lines to make it right. But if you start noticing that my mowing now is 10,000, it's not 5, well, we got a problem. Okay, I'm gonna overdraft here, well, if I only got five to take from there, before I know, I'm zeroed out, I'm gonna go over budget. You have to, you have to be able to do that and keep that in check, and honestly, you're gonna have to start working with the treasurer to do that. You know, because we can.
Robin, you do know that this is your responsibility to manage the budget?
Correct.
Okay, I just don't, it's not, not the treasurer, and it's not Mark Roy, they, they're sort of after the fact accounts.
Right.
The, the actual approval and the management of that budget belongs, is the responsibility of all departments, the IG, for you, for Jennifer, for her operation, et cetera. Who's gonna manage their budget? So if you're not getting information you need to do that, you either gotta figure it out yourself, or you gotta talk to Jennifer and see if some combination, but at the end of the day, it's your budget, it's your expense, if it's overdrafted, it's your responsibility to deal with it. I don't know, how else to say it?
I would mention to the treasurer, because what I used to do is go in and see what bills came in.
Yeah, they could.
So I could make sure, because I had, I had contractors that said their bills in three months later, you know? But, okay, so, I think we.
Think we, not just went to death.
Yeah.
Did we have the wording on that one?
Okay, so, appreciate it, Robin.
Article three is to see if the town will vote to appropriate 14,150 from the unassigned fund balance for the transfer station expenses for the current FY '24, '25 year. And this number comes from the, one, two, three, four, five months of skid steer rentals from ND Rental, because that was not in his current budget.
Was that take us through November?
It takes us through November, it gives us time if the next one passes. It is nothing else but that. Article four, to see if the town will vote to appropriate 55,819 from the unassigned fund balance for the purchase of a skid steer. This is the low bid from MB Tractor with the backup camera added, the invoice for 55,819.
So would they add on 819 dollars for the camera?
500.
500. I think they wanted me to split it.
I think there's been a lot of good work done on this. For those that worked on it, I think you did a great job, I'm very comfortable with this.
Article five, to see if the town will vote to appropriate 45,000 from the unassigned fund balance for the purchase of land located at Tax Map 133 Lot 40. This is the number that the attorney was able to negotiate with the board's permission, seller for the piece of land next to Wilson Lake, that the Conservation Forestry Committee spoke to about some time ago.
Who's gonna speak to this item at county meeting, or the public hearing?
Um, so I have told the Conservation Forestry Chair that you guys are moving it forward to special town meeting, and asked them to be present, as essentially they initiated the request to the board. I know that Dan has some thoughts on it as the lay's on, I'll make sure to get them up as well.
All right.
Yep, good.
Article six, to see if the town will vote to appropriate 9,000 to deposit, oh, I need to say 9,000, from the unassigned fund balance. So to see the town will vote to appropriate 9,000 from the unassigned fund balance to deposit into the existing statutory reserved fund. This puts 9,000 in the article four, what we used to call Article 43, the 9,000, but the town shall fund it until, the proposed repairs until 9,000 is exhausted, or June 30th of 2025, whichever comes first. And I need to reach out to Mark Roy tomorrow, make sure that, it's clearly written that at the end, whether there's money left or not, it dissolves, goes back into the general fund until we're done.
So this takes us through the two projects that the, the road committee?
No, those already got funded.
We split those in half, this is, this is, when I, when I went to the road committee meet the other night, we discussed those, those projects, we knew we were zeroing that out, so, they, they felt that, you know, what's gonna happen, and we have people in spring, which normally is when they do it. We would be zeroed out, we, we had money, they asked if they could put forward some money, I agreed that I would present it to you guys, and only if they continued working on the procedure that I, we were talking.
Going forward, yeah. And the wording from that article is copy and pasted from Article 43 originally, so. Article seven, to see if the town will vote to appropriate 130,000 from the unassigned fund balance to increase the deputy contract law enforcement services enacted from 20 to 40 hours a week and purchase a patrol car. So that essentially buys out Chapley's half, and gives Acton a 40 hour service, 40 hours a week, plus the car, which was gonna be required me the way.
And the vehicle is what?
53,000.
53,000.
So.
Yeah, 75, 80,000, but like 20 hours.
I just thought of this, I probably should have thought it's earlier, but, so when we voted on this back in the day, do any of you know what year it was?
18.
When they first did it anyways, okay? There was two articles, two articles, so, one article was?
The contract.
Contract, with Chapley, and if it didn't pass, there was another one for Acton would pick up to 40, okay? It was like a fail safe or whatever. Okay? Should we do this here?
Well, we got a legal opinion on that a year or so ago, we didn't ask last time to enter into the contract. If the money is appropriated, like a photocopy release, photocopy contract, the advice we got from legal, I can certainly double check, was that when they appropriate, if the town will vote to appropriate it, they're giving you the right to enter into that contract, not to exceed that amount.
So what I'm worried is this, okay, see, it says, from 20 to 40 hours a week and purchase a patrol car, that's fine, but the word saying go from 20 to 40, so if the, the public says, no, I don't wanna go to the 40, because it's gonna cause X and X amount, blah, 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 should we have that fail safe where they can vote?
We already have, so we have, for our budget, we have January 1st, June 30th.
I just want to make sure.
You separate your vehicle into a separate one?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend it, because if you do, and you end up getting a deputy and no car, then why?
Or if the whole thing gets killed, you don't have a car, and the sheriff's saying.
Well, we're not gonna need the car until the end of the fiscal year.
Okay.
So we'll have to ask for that, if we, if we stick with services the way they are, split with Chapley, we'll ask for half of the car in April, the town meeting.
Good.
So we don't need the car until we're finished with that year?
Right, and they're, they're saying that it can run for, they know that our fiscal year ended in June, that's when they were planning on it's fine. I mean, Chapley's town meeting is on till March, so.
Till the spring meeting? Should we hold off on the car until the spring meeting?
Well, I don't think that'd be.
Well, no, we need half a hole.
I think our contract comes up, doesn't the contract come up at the end of the?
The contract expires in December.
Well, if, if you do just the 20 to 40, 40 hours.
And it starts January 1st.
Starts January 1st, then you have the money to go to a full-time officer, if they doesn't get approved, you just continue with the half-time officer.
But still they got.
But if it passes.
But you don't need the car until June.
Well, what are we, I mean, we have to then deal with Chapley, if it passes and we don't have the car.
Yeah.
Chapley owns that car.
I'll be quiet.
It may take us a couple of months to get a car, but it's gonna be, I think it's what my jumper said.
We have our own deputy, we need our own. He did say that he would find us a car for that period of time.
Oh, good, good.
All right. Okay, so, next, see if the town will vote to appropriate 41,136.25 from the unassigned fund balance and place it, corrections as I go, it in the Peck Road Reserve Account to finish the reconstruction and paving of the portion of Peck Road from Milton Mills to the dirt. Any funds remaining in this account after completion of repair, no later than June 30th of 2025, shall be returned to the unassigned fund balance. So back in 2023, this was one of the first reserve road articles that we did, this was the other district that originally started this, there's some work left to do, that Will's gonna explain that in the bid.
Oh, yeah, we out there, we probably only get days worth of work, there's a couple of ditches need to be tuned out, nothing, nothing crazy, like I said, days worth of work, and they can come in and pay, they have to pave the rest of the road, that's it.
But they're doing the shoulders.
Yeah, that was the price.
Okay. You did, I'm gonna make sure you warn them.
So just, I just, so we can clarify, trying to figure this out, what's left in the account now?
26,180.
Okay, and you're asking for an additional 40?
72 and 21.
So the, the invoice that he got in today for the paving, the one inch, and shoulder gravel was 67, 616, 25, less the 26, 40 that's in there is 41, 136, not a penny more.
Okay, I was looking at the wrong number here. Okay, so, seeing what you're doing with these projects now, there's, you know, solid number that was going by, what was, what wasn't included in the last?
Uh, they never, what, work wasn't done?
Well, no, there's 29,000, what was that supposed to finish?
I think that was part of the paving, I believe, I, I don't know, I got to last spring, I was planning on building a rubber road, I called Charlie's and just give me the price to finish Peck Road, give me the price, and we came offshore by like 30 grand somewhere, and I don't.
Was there any extra work that was done after that, like some old ditches or something, maybe?
I mean, we, I remember calling Jen, and I think Lauren pulled all the invoices, and like we looked at them, and I, I don't.
You think you didn't figure out maybe the shoulders, because you guys always did it yourself?
I, I, I don't, I don't know, I, I mean, although, everything added up, I mean, the only bill that was in there that was, that was not included in Peck Road, is I think they reclaimed the road before they started the project, like there was money left over and the road got reclaimed, but that would have just benefited in, in the long run.
Yeah, yeah. But I think. There was, I knew there was an issue where, I think we came in after that and said, no, 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 because I think what they were doing, he was using like maintenance money, he was, it was some money swapping back.
Still had the paving money, like the 250, I think there was, because I remember looking at the bill, and it was dated in June, you know, we wouldn't have got the money until July, so I think the grinding got done in July, but at the same time, I don't know if they, I, I don't know, I mean, we pulled all the.
Yeah, I mean, after reviewing all the bills, we're really just saying that we inadvertently under budgeted by mistake, I mean, it's, this is where we're at.
When you have a project like this, and you're short of funds, is there any reason why we can't look at the public works budget broadly, and see if there is money in that budget?
Well, the problem is with the way we've got this set up is, it's its own self-award article, so.
But it wouldn't prevent us from taking, you know, operating money for, out of your budget, to, to fund whatever the shortfall is. Let me tell you where I'm going, last year, there was a significant surplus in the public works accounts, and I don't know where you're trending this year, but if you're gonna have another surplus, then perhaps that can be used to fund this rather than undesigned reserves. that can be used to fund this rather than undesigned reserves.
I'll tell you why there's a surplus in this report. So I had, I know there was leftover money in district, in district one, but last year, I, we sold the two hundred and fifty thousand of paving, remember? We always had that article? I paved West Shore Drive, that was two hundred and one thousand dollars. I paved it at the end of June.
Yeah.
I had forty-nine thousand dollars left over in the paving. So the way Mark Roy does it, he lumps the numbers together, so that's where you get the seventy thousand dollars from. There was fifty.
Wait, wait a minute, the way Mark Roy does what?
No.
The second time I heard of it, Ken, well, I hate Mark Roy being responsible for the Dallas.
If I was in the town hall last week, Jen showed it to me, if you look at the district one surplus, it says seventy thousand dollars, which was, he lumped the paving in the summertime into one, that's why there's that surplus.
This is just his report for the auditorium, just all articles.
Yeah, that, that's what, but that's what happens. That's part of your budget. So he's just taking all the stuff that you didn't spend and putting it in one note. So, um, yeah, I don't achieve with the one item.
Right, you're like.
Okay.
But that was the audit report.
The paving, the number we have, we, the number we settled off was, the number that I got was like two twenty-five. It was like, well, you know, we'll have a little bit left over, but I wasn't planning on, but he kinda helped us out a little bit, you know, Charlie helped us out, so we were at two hundred. And then by then, I was just scraping by to get the bill in, so there was gonna be a surplus of money left over.
So, yeah, so are we, question, are we, are we rolling over, we're not rolling funds over in bulk, right?
No, we're all, I mean.
No, nothing.
Okay, so, so I guess your, to answer your question, it's pretty much a good fact how designated funding.
I, I guess it does, I'm just.
Do you have any money in this year's budget to fund the forty-one thousand in summer maintenance?
I'm not taking, I'm not taking out summer maintenance either one.
I'm not asking you to be, still have anything. I just wanna know if there's any money left there that could be used.
That's what you've kind of decided.
So what, whatever's left in summer maintenance now, whatever you have left in summer maintenance is spoken for specifically?
I wouldn't spend it. If I spent it now, I'd be having money. I would have any money in district two. I got, I, I did the report for Mark Roy, you know, whenever, right off, and there's probably sixty thousand there, but like, you know, I gotta, I still got work to do and I need to wrap, run that money till springtime. I mean, we, remember, we cut the budget by twenty grand, so like.
I, I understand, that's what.
I know, I'm not, I know, I know that, but I'm just, I'm just saying, like.
We, we.
I don't think I did, I bet.
No, no, we, oh, no, we use the money to offset the special projects, remember?
Okay.
We agreed on it. I'll, we'll go back, watch the tape.
No, no.
Well, there's no reason.
We had a hundred and twenty-seven, I'm ju, I'm just saying, like, we, like, we took a cut of twenty thousand dollars in each budget to offset the special projects for last year.
Well, so, no, 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 I'm gonna stop you right there, okay? So, what we did well, okay, was, I, no, 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 you gotta let me finish here, okay? Cause I, 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 I went through this whole thing with you, okay? So, we didn't cut your budget, okay, per se, but what happened was, you got this project for this amount of money. Then you had this project for this amount of money, okay? And then you added on to this number over here for your maintenance, even though you already added the same, these projects in already. You get what I mean?
Yeah, I understand that.
Okay, so we asked you to pull twenty thousand out, cause you added sixty here.
I understand that. We agreed, we agreed, but I'm saying.
But so this is, this is the problem, okay, is you've got an increase, huge increase here, here, okay? Meaning, those roads, the, the maintenance money is not paying for those projects anymore, right?
I, I understand that.
Right, so you took a twenty thousand dollar hit on three hundred thousand dollars worth of work.
I understand that, but what I'm saying.
You gained somewhere.
I understand that gain, but what I'm saying.
You didn't cut nobody's budget.
I never, I didn't say we cut, I said we offset it. I said we use that money to offset the special project.
But at the end of the day though, you should be better on the maintenance side than you were before because you're not doing the work.
I know, I mean, I'm gonna be, I bet you by next June, I won't have any more.
Sixty thousand dollars that you're talking right now is all just one side down?
Yeah.
Okay.
Let me, let me say what, let me get at what I was trying to say. You've got operating funds, you have your winter budgets, your sand, summer maintenance, et cetera, and that's a budget, and I don't know what it is, probably a million dollars for, for both districts. And then you've got capital funds that have specific projects accounts set up for them. As far as I'm concerned, that's the total of your budget. And if you need more here, the first like thing I would do is say, look here. And if you have to reduce scope, give us the options for reducing scope here, so we don't increase the budget at all. That's a reasonable thing to do. Don't just think because it's capital, that if you're over on capital, we're gonna give you that. I wanna go back in and look at your operating budget and say, what can you do to reduce it so that we don't increase the budget at all? And I just wanna have that discussion. I'm not saying we're gonna automatically do it, but we ought to go through that analysis before we just appropriate more money.
Right, I, I understand that. I'm not saying we, I just use the word, I mean, anybody would use the word, cut it. I understand why we offset, we use the, the twenty thousand offset projects. I mean, I don't think we should do that next year myself, but that's a conversation in budget time.
I just wanna have the conversation.
I just, I don't feel like it's like, if, yeah, there's forty grand in there, but I don't feel as if we should use.
So he's just asking for breakdown of that summer maintenance, that sixty thousand that was, just tell him how, what you're spending on. Does it mean you sell them, what you're spending on?
So, so right now, you think you roughly got about sixty thousand dollars in your maintenance account?
For district two.
District two, oh, in September, I had seventy-five, and I, I've done work on district two, we did work on Harper Road, we done work, so, I mean, we're probably right around sixty-five, sixty. I mean, I just, I don't feel comfortable taking the money out.
So, no, no, and, and, no, at the end of the day, we would have to, we'd have to vote to do it because it's its own separate article, so you'd have to vote to pull money out of road, road commission district one's meeting.
Well, no, 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 it's on the district two.
Yeah.
It's on the district two.
On district two, so.
No, you could, I, well, I mean, I just have to answer their question. I mean, you could drain down Peck Road and take the rest out of summer maintenance, a district two. You could, but he has a plan, he wants a chance to tell you what he's spending that on.
I understand that. I just wanna have the discussion.
That's all.
That's all, before we just assume, because this account's over, we're gonna appropriate more money. There may be opportunities to reexamine what you were going to do and say, Peck Road's a higher priority, maybe we don't do this, and we key that up for the next year's budget. That's just, that's normal budgeting practice.
So are you like saying, should we, should we wait and see what we have there, money in the spring?
No, just give them a breakdown of what the remainder of the district two summer maintenance, what you plan to do with it this week?
Right, right now?
Well, no, it does not have to be right now, maybe next.
Personally, I never like to see anything in a special town meeting. I think we approve the budget in the fall. If there's something unusual coming up, I get it. But for a project that's already been pre-approved, or whether it is, uh, the same thing to do with the, uh, um, the rental, uh, expense.
Of, of receiving.
No, no, I understand. What we ought to look at, what else is in your budget? And is there some way of covering that expense with your existing, I'm not saying there is, but we ought to be looking at it and say, before we just ask for money for this number, for this item, you ought to look at your budget overall and see if we can fund it without asking for additional money.
I think what you're saying, Tom, is at the end of the day, you don't wanna come into, uh, July first or June thirtieth and have surplus money in those accounts, and we're just with the town meeting.
Yeah, we just said we asked it, but I know, I know. I mean, just a couple of things, and so that, the Peck Road, remember, we started doing these reserve accounts, and this was done in twenty-three by the previous road commissioner, and it has to be completed by June thirtieth to twenty twenty-five.
And, and it's not your fault, we know, I, I know, we know that, we're just trying to come up some.
Just.
It's a different way of thinking about it, that if we, if we're on the same page, and when these issues come up, we know we gotta do work to scour all of the budgets to make sure there isn't money someplace that can be used to cover these things. That's all we can do.
And you have specific goals to set up?
I'd just like to say that if I had sixty thousand dollars when I was road commissioner in November, October, I mean, I'd be pretty happy, cause I think I'll have eighty-five on here. No, no, six weeks ago.
Can he put together a breakdown of the remaining funds and how he plans to spend it?
Look, let's just go forward with what we got. I'm, I was, I was gonna make a, a comment about the way I think it should work.
But I think you're right, and I think you should have that prepared for the public hearing, because it's a legitimate question. So if you can stand up and tell the voters what you're gonna do with the remainder of the summer maintenance, it's a good point to have, because all those roads that you're gonna deal with on the sixty thousand, those voters, you know, are, will have to support it.
Yes.
So you should have a breakdown.
Well, I understand that, but at the same time, I look at it as like, that was a special project, that money was voted on.
Right.
I don't feel as the road commissioner, we should take the money out of that budget to finish that road. That, that money was voted on at town meeting.
And that's, that's just, that's just.
But you know, look that way, the problem is, is at the end of the day, it's all money, it's all come out, that's good, and, you know, they, but they, you, you sometimes you have to make the sacrifice here to do there. No, I agree. This was a separate article, that's why I think that it, it's gonna be tough to do that because it's separate. And the way, the way that we had it separated, the reason why we were doing that was because we wanted to know where, what that project cost, and good, so it's good practice by doing that, by voting and doing it this way, everything stays there, stays away from the maintenance stuff, but, but, at the end of the day, sometimes you do have to make that sacrifice. Are we not mowing bushes? Maybe we won't do this, they won't do that. You know, we, we have to have those answers up here. Especially show there was a huge, what's a huge, but there was a significant surplus last year, that we don't wanna make it look like that we're asking a special town meeting for a bunch of money when you didn't spend the money out last year.
What did we do with the fire, the fire department?
We didn't give them any more money.
But there was something they wanted money for.
The pump.
Yeah, we said, look in your budget.
There was the pump, the pump.
The pump, he wanted money for it, and he said, you said, why don't you look in your budget and see what you can do? And he found the money.
Come back to us, landline.
Asking for.
Yeah, come back to us, we need to.
That kind of process.
We, we're, we're here to work with you, we wanna make sure everything is right. This is a, this is an odd circumstance because we came in behind somebody else. He might've figured the numbers differently, don't know why, uh, I'm sure good intentions, uh, but, but we don't wanna have this problem every, every part. No, I don't want, I'm asking for money. But that, you, you, West Shore Drive, is that, is that project done?
No.
But that's not on its own article, but, you know, you're, you're looking possibly needs more of that at some point.
Yeah, I was gonna probably show the half of it this fall, and if I got money left over in the springtime, I'll show the other half of it. But same thing, that was another.
The shoulders are coming out of the car.
I'm gonna have to get out of my, my summer maintenance, I hate to, but I'm gonna have to.
But, but you're gonna have to, okay?
But that wasn't, it wasn't.
He's gonna have to, because you, you know, to let that road, branding road go for a whole winter with all the shoulders on it, is, is not a good idea, you know that.
Oh, I, I know.
So guess what? You, you, you finish that project, then you gotta sacrifice somewhere else.
I, trust me, I, it, I wasn't, I wasn't happier than how the springtime laid out. I was hoping that we'd get in paid right in the springtime, but it just, it didn't happen. I had the money to do it, but, you know, it just, it is what it's town schedule.
Things happen, we understand.
I, I don't, I hate to take that much money out of my budget, but I, you said, I just.
It, it, you know, I used to leave twenty-third, twenty to twenty-five thousand, those great roads, do some shoulders, start this and that sweeping, okay? If, if you've got sixty thousand dollars, you should be able to afford, spend in, and not to, at least shoulder that road, then just do the bare minimum after that.
That's, I mean, I mean, that's what I, I've broken that district one budget out already once, you know, so, so much here, so much there, so much there, you know, and like, I, I get it, you know what I mean, but it's, like you said, you have to sacrifice somewhere, but just how it goes, but.
Let's concentrate on Peck Road, so we don't, that, we want that done before June thirtieth, cause we don't want it. We don't want our first reserve road. So just, just give a breakdown of what you're gonna use the rest of district two summer maintenance for.
So, so we, when do we have the meeting again?
Uh, next Wednesday, we're having a public hearing.
We're voting on money next week?
We're having a public hearing so the residents and voters, Warren Finance can discuss the articles. The board would have to make any changes that night, cause we're planning to.
Warren Finance is taking it up the following week?
Fifteenth.
The fifteenth, so that board will then approve it, and then it goes to public county meeting.
So I'm just, I'd like to line everything up, and they come to the eight road, they do the eight road, they go there, they go there, done.
Well, you can line it up as long as they know it's contingent on county approval or your summer maintenance.
Right, well, I told them, I, I told them I'd need it for the night if I.
Well, you needed the number, you did.
So, Peck Road, when do you, when do you want to have that done? I mean, you want it at that time?
I'd like to try to do it this year, just to get it done over, but I mean, all it kinda depends on.
First couple of weeks in November?
Yeah, I mean, if it comes up and told whether, you know, we're gonna have to wait, you know, I really shouldn't be putting service on the first week in November.
Oh, really? Okay.
I think it's all, I mean, that's why, it's why messes up with West Shore last year.
Yeah, I know, I know.
I bet you that.
Yeah, that's what happened up there on the eight road, when they did that, they halted the night before.
But you got, you got the price up again, and you have to do it this spring, right?
And, uh.
That was thirty days. I mean, I don't, that's the thing, that's thirty days.
But there's a road, there's a road.
Then we approve the, the tonnage price, how's it changing? Then we, we go off the paving bid, what's the purpose of that if they, it's not good all year?
I guess when we did the paving, they, they only bid it on the two roads.
Well, but it doesn't matter if we do two or five, isn't it the same price?
We all want to do two, that's.
Well, but I'm just saying, if we're approving a paving company at such and such rate, whether we have to do it one, three, or five, shouldn't be the good number for June thirtieth?
I'm gonna ask him.
Well, hey man, let's look up the contract we have with it, it probably.
I mean, we awarded it at such and such rate.
I thought we just awarded the new hot dog bid.
Yeah, we did, a couple of weeks ago.
We did?
Yeah.
Are these bid based on those prices?
I think it should be.
I'm not comparing them, I assumed you looked at, I, let's.
I just, I always, we, I mean, we have the contract, so I called them up that day, I said, just give me a price to surface that.
Right, but if we know the footage, I mean, we ought to have a kinda calculator too, to make sure he's using the rate that he, the board approved.
Well, you need to know how many tons it go.
Is it, the tons are on it, bro?
Yeah, it should be.
If, if, if we're gonna have a town meeting on October thirtieth, right?
Right.
Is it feasible they can do it this winter or this fall?
Yes.
I, because you say you don't wanna do it.
Well, I mean, if it comes off, it's like forty degrees in the last couple of weeks in November, then.
Then they can be ready enough to commit?
I've seen them paid right into December. I bought, but that's gonna be a really good year for that. I mean, the hot dog plant's gonna be shut down by Thanksgiving.
I guess I'm right.
Well, what I, my question is this, June thirtieth, the money runs out on that project?
Peck Road, yes.
On the Peck Road. Is there shoulders on that road now?
Yeah, we showed it last.
Okay, so if we approve this money, because you could, you could, it went, went through last month, fine, right?
Yeah.
Okay, we, he could do this in April or whatever. So maybe that you don't have to rush it, but do we take this off now, put it up at town meeting? No, we, we have to, we have to.
Because the town meeting is effective July one.
Yes.
Right.
Okay.
We vote, we vote in April for the next fiscal year.
But you could have something voted in April for immediate expenses.
If you worded correctly, could you?
You can, you, you can do that.
And we did that with the, the school.
With something.
Schools article.
School article.
I, I have no problem doing it right now. I mean, it's on here, I'm just, I'm just saying, you don't have to pave it right now.
Well, I know, I, I swear. If the weather turns.
Yeah, I know, I, we probably could be, but you know, I just, all it kinda just depends on weather, you know what I mean, but.
Okay, well, there's a good chance you could do it.
You guys, when do you start the county road project?
I'll probably prep it all this fall, and I'll probably do that job in the spring.
So you could do that one and that one at the same time?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think I'll get the calendar up this fall. I mean, I'm gonna go down there and do work and get it ready, then I'll just do it.
Let's look at your district two summer, next couple of days. All right, last article. So, I see the town will vote to appropriate sixty-five thousand dollars from the unassigned fund balance to be placed in the town hall parking lot capital reserve account.
Okay, we had engaged a, uh, landscape design person, they had done the design. Jennifer, I had spent some time talking with him. I think he's done a, a really nice job of, uh, uh, putting together a concept of how it might look. Um, for the public hearing, we'll have the photos available, right Jennifer?
Yes, sir.
And the little video that, you know, show you various angles around, you can see all the work that's gonna be done. This individual is also, who did the design, is also a landscaper himself. And so I, I asked him to provide a quote on what he, what he designed. He did that, and it came in at around seventy-three thousand dollars for the work. So there's still some, uh, decisions to be made about exactly what aspects of these things do we do at all? There's some things we could do without, or do differently, that could end up altering. But what I'm recommending is that we put forth a warrant to appropriate seventy-five thousand dollars for the landscaping component of the town complex.
Plus, we, we have money in the coffers now.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Uh, we got fifty-six thousand in there right now for doing paving and all the other stuff that we have to do.
So we'd have to do the seventy-five thousand approximately for the landscape. The paving was what, thirty?
Thirty thousand, well, thirty plus ten, so forty.
Forty thousand?
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine.
Yeah, okay, so that's a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. We have fifty-eight?
Six.
Fifty-six.
Fifty-six in the reserve, so that means we need.
Fifty-nine thousand.
Fifty-nine thousand dollars that will allow us to do the paving that was envisioned when that money was put aside, along with the landscaping.
Right.
That'll take care of everything.
I gotta say, I think it looks really nice.
No, I, I think it's.
And we'll go out to bid, of course, and so we'll see what the bids come in at, make them in last.
Fifty-nine.
Yeah, fifty.
So fifty-nine is, is.
Well, I have to get a second plan. I got to get.
Sixty-five.
You're sixty-five, Jennifer.
I, you know, I would say I would, you know.
I mean, these are.
I think we added a few. I think we added.
Yeah.
So we'll review our numbers solid.
There was, um, seventy-five for the landscaping, forty thousand for the paving. A total of one fifteen, less the fifty-five we've got in there. That was sixty, and I said, you know, we could make some changes between now and when we do it, so make it sixty-five thousand. That's how we came to it.
Okay, so, um, I will take the changes that we came up with, um.
So we're not going to vote on this?
No, no, because we're getting the public, you know, Warren Finance, we're getting the changes still.
Well, we don't, we don't have the vote to send this to them?
No.
No? Okay, good.
I'll get it printed up, and I'll send it off tomorrow with the, um, official invitation to our public hearing next week.
Okay.
Did, I, I talked with you about, uh, speaking of Warren Finance.
Yes.
Talked to you about sending, uh, the chair note. Did you do that?
Regarding?
Uh, reports and information that they, they.
Uh, yes. Yeah, yeah, I hear that.
Thank you.
Okay, we all done with that? I guess, uh, here we go. Executive session. Do I have a motion?
You want to do a public comment?
Yeah, we can do that. Yeah.
Sure.
Well, seeing we have an executive session, we'll do a public comment first. Uh, well, hold on a second. Is, is that going to be a decision?
Yeah, I'm hoping so.
Well, then we're going to sit, have you sit back down then.
Okay.
Hoping that you really might can't do a public comment anymore.
Well, I mean.
Chuck you, you do what you want.
You don't want to bother me?
Then it's here.
Come on, I'm off here. Well, you could do the public comment. I don't know how to allow. Usually I don't do that.
Yeah.
If there's going to be a decision, if maybe a decision, I'm going to announce it, maybe a decision, so you might want to go on afterwards.
Okay.
If you can, so go ahead.
Um, has anything been decided before we do this landscaping stuff about the library? What? Have they wanted more space? They're outgrowing their space? Are we going to, could we talk about adding on or something and making? I don't know. I'm just asking a question.
The library hasn't officially come to the board.
I haven't heard anything from them about this.
Right, when we did the, the overlook of the buildings, I mean, you know, the parking lot, there's, I mean, Coles would like more room, we'd like more room. There's been a lot of talk.
It was a wish list that went off.
Yeah, but the library, no one's come to the board. I mean, they're not doing anything at this point. They're just going to clean up the parking lot and decide later on what you're going to do with the space, right?
The way it's, way it's.
It means like, if we're going to do something to this building, we probably ought to do it before.
I don't believe we're doing anything to this building.
Well, um, this complex. If we're going to add on to the library, if we're going to do some changes before we do landscaping, that's all I'm asking. All I'm.
I, I would say that's true for landscaping and paving. You're not going to do any other thing until, if we're going to do that. I haven't heard anything from the library or anyone.
I heard talks about the library being.
We, we talked about possibly putting a building out there, then putting a library.
Exactly.
With a red tag. And honestly, at this point in time, I don't, I don't.
Most of the landscaping is down further anyway, right?
No, just somewhere on the library.
Yeah, a little bit up there mostly for safety because of.
We wouldn't be touching the light. We're not, we're not adding on to that library.
Okay.
That's a dull building.
Even if we wanted to build it.
I believe you mentioned that, you know, we're going to, we could add.
You were throwing stuff around, and, but at the end of the day, the problem is, Robin, is, uh, uh, you know, the government, you know why nothing gets done in government? Because we keep talking and.
Yeah, absolutely.
And honestly, at the end of the day, uh, that wish list that came out, someone went around asking this and that. Anytime we do that, you're, you know, like me, if someone comes up and says, hey, what would you like to do to expand your company? I want to ask you, well.
And just like, just like, again, we kicked that can around for.
Yeah, we probably got rid of that.
Well, yeah, no, I mean, how long did we kick that can down?
Because, because people come up with new ideas, and we did this and that, but then.
And.
We're, we're, I, I just, what I think what Tom is presenting is a really good upgrade.
Yeah.
And honestly, we, I love the way it looks right now, open up.
I do, yeah.
It enhances the building, and honestly, at the end of the day, I don't want to put another structure in front of this building.
Right.
And we, we can, well, no, no, I'm just, just, I'm not trying to be that guy. I'm just trying to.
Yeah.
Express my, my, uh, what I think should happen. I think, I think that the town of Acton, eventually down the road, could look for more property and more, and, and look for, make the complex look different. But right now, what we're doing right now, you know, this doesn't look very good out here.
I'm not, I'm not, I, that's not where I was going with that. I just wanted to say, you know, did we take?
Obviously, in the. I mean, if the library felt they needed more space, it would be incumbent upon them, their board, to give it. Hold on, let me finish, please.
Yeah.
We're not going to go to them and say, would you like us to build you a new library? They've got to define what it is they need, why they need it, and why they think the town should pay for that. And then they would present that for the select. None of that has happened.
I believe that without the last, last one of last year's budget, it, it would disgust.
It was, it was thrown around, you know, it threw lots around, a couple of racks, red tags, this and that.
Okay, let's get off that subject. Let's get back on the transfer station. Where are we starting? We got an engineer already.
I think right now, we got other issues with that transfer station, Robin?
Yeah.
I think this is the last time we probably ought to be talking about right now. Okay?
Hey, I brought in, I bring in a thousand dollars a week, so, you know, that's.
Did you just look at the word?
I saw it.
Did you see that? We have a little word over there, okay? I think we asked a little word, what was that?
Okay.
Well, before we get into this, Robin, just telling you right now, the last thing my priority, listen right now, is going to spend a couple hundred grand up there with.
I, I, I didn't say we had to. I'd say let's do it in piecemeal. The same project that we're, we're aiming to, was take five to six years to get that same thing. I was talking to my agent on unit, you know, to do steps by step. We don't have to do the project all at once. The biggest thing up there, there's going to be the blasting behind the, the recycling building. Let's put it up. I know you don't like, like, like our idea, David, is putting another gate in and keeping the sand full, moving, move, wait, don't, don't. Moving the booty shack.
Excuse me, Robin, excuse me, Robin. Okay, first of all.
Yeah.
I'm the chair.
I understand.
You're on the select board.
Yeah.
You don't tell us what we're talking, okay? We run the meeting, okay? Just calm down.
You do it to me.
Whoa, 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 okay?
Yeah.
Then, I think at this point in time, Robin, um, this is going to be on the back burner for a little bit. So I'm just answering your question. You asked a question. No more. You're not going to speak anymore on this at this point, okay? I'm answering your question right now. As of right now, this is on the back burner because we have other fish to fish.
We have to.
Okay, that's it. No more, done.
One question.
No, we're not going any more about this right now. Um, you know, we've got, we've got our concerns and stuff that we're dealing with now, and, and this is not something we want to be dealing with right now. Thank you. Oh, Joe, thank you.
Yeah, I want to ask you, people, can you drink the water that comes from this well, or does it just use for?
We, we have.
We have a filtration system, yes, bigger filter.
Yeah. We just have, we just have a filtration system put in.
Have you guys ever thought about cleaning the algae that's between the library and the town hall and the algae over here?
Actually, it's on our handyman's list of, of things to do.
You're talking about on the side and spraying?
Pressure washing.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We took millions of dollars and put it into the transfer station to make it more usable, user-friendly. Have you ever thought of that?
No, I, I did not. I didn't get, we just said what?
Take the sixty-five thousand dollars, you've got a landscape. What, you're going to put some rhododendrons up there or lax?
Oh, no, no, no.
And put the money up in the, in the transfer station where it's needed.
Next week, you will see what's being designed.
Yeah.
On the landscape.
This is an old building. They put more fertilizer on that lawn. It's green. If you really, really wanted to do something, you could keep it simple. You could build a small garden around the, uh, sign out there and make it so that somebody can want to change the things there. But putting this kind of money into this structure here is, I think, is cool.
And I think there's a public meeting, next, public hearing next week, and I would suggest you bring those comments forward there. That's where there'll be other, hopefully, other people.
Here.
They can hear your point of view.
Well, let's remind us of that anyhow. I mean, what do you, what is your objective here?
Well, I, I think Tom's objective is, is when we took the building down, we noticed that we have a, an eyesore down there right now. Something we can't.
Why is it an eyesore?
Well, listen, listen, Joe, Joe, it's a big dirt spot in the middle. That's not a playground. That's not a playground. That's a big dirt spot. Well, the problem was, we don't want to go out and spend money, go fix the dirt spot up that has a big hole that's obviously dangerous, you know? Uh, so we're looking at it going, you know what? Uh, you know, Tom had some pretty good ideas, you know, we'll go with some tana walls or this and that. It would look a lot better if we could spit this up. We can do this. I, you know, we get crap all the time. When you go so tricks in the building, well, are you going to do it? So we're going to do it.
Yeah.
We get crap in the building.
How many years has road bridges look like crap?
Road bridge?
In, in the roads and the places that, uh.
Joe.
That weren't repaired. Roads that weren't repaired.
How much money we put forward every year?
Well, maybe we should have put more money before.
So, listen to this. We just, we just talked to our road commissioner about his expenditures, right? And he didn't even spend the money he had last year, okay? And we just threw a bunch more money. We went from, and I'm going to use myself again because that's all we were talking about myself, but I had a hundred thousand dollars worth of paving when I was road commissioner six years ago. We are now at what?
Eighteen fifty-three hundred.
Okay, now double that. It's five hundred. We've got half a million dollars worth of paving a year, not including the maintenance money. Okay, we've already got two bridges in town. We want to do that bridge.
And we're going to do it.
And we're going to do it. We, we have full intention of doing it. I think we've done great to get, we got the canal done, and we got my shadrack there, and road bridge is on radar. I'd be more worried. Road bridge isn't my concern right now, Joe. Milton Mills Road is my concern. Okay, I'd be, I'd be more worried about that.
Did you look to Augusta and tell them that?
Well, you know, we, they've already got it planned. We've done a lot, I've done a lot of phone calls over the years, and you know what? Augusta sucks. They don't do anything that, you know, they just keep pushing everything off, and they're filing, now, what, a two thousand twenty-seven? I think they're going to get to it, something like that. You know, we can't, but road bridge, the problem we're having with road bridges, and, and we'll get flagged for it.
I'm just, I was just network, the, the.
Yes, we did talk to Will about that.
Yeah, we talked about the, the, how many years, Dave. It was like that when you were road commissioner.
Yes, it was. Yeah.
Right, why didn't you do something when you were road commissioner?
We did. We had a lot to fix when we were.
Look, this isn't, this isn't what we need. It's fine. You made your opinion known. I think that's what the public hearing is, or your public comment section is for.
I, I gotta, I gotta answer for him. I gotta answer for him, okay? Because I'm just exploring how much money I did not have back when I was road commissioner, okay? The little, little itty-bitty hundred thousand dollars a year I had for paving and the eighty-some thousand I had for my whole summertime and springtime maintenance money compared to what we've got now, that's why certain things didn't get done. And when we talked about doing these other projects, I didn't have that money. You know why we had that money, Joe? Me, okay? Because what I got in here, we boosted that budget up threefold, okay? These guys got money now. So don't be crapping on what I gave when I was road commissioner. I did, I did a great job.
How much did we spend on Peck Road?
Oh, I don't have those figures in front of me. Well, what do you mean?
Why wasn't it neglected for all those years?
What are you talking about? Because I just told you there was nobody to fix on. You know, you know what I did, Joe? Joe, you know what I did?
I know what you did do. I know what you didn't do.
Joe, you go sit down.
No, I'm not going to go sit down.
Please, go sit down. You're not going to get, you're not going to.